Starting streaming, so I can't stop.
Alright, we are streaming, huh? There are all the twenty twenty six budget needing to order, I guess. Yes, roll call, we've, looks like we've got everybody here.
Jim Magless.
Here.
Dan Ballard.
Here.
Bruce McIntosh.
Here.
Neil Moody.
Here.
Dan B.
Here.
Alright. Mark is here. Glasses on here. Is that where we want to start with?
Did you guys, did I send you the, if we take all the two hundred downs lit out? Page that looks like this? You got that? First thing I think we need to know is we kind of talked about it before everybody got here. Probably by the end of the year, our beginning cash balance of January first, twenty twenty six, twenty twenty five, and the ending will be probably six hundred thousand dollars in the negative. That will have to be zeroed up before the end of the year. But that will have to be basically come out of general. They're the only ones that count any money. Because we only got one point fifty thousand for fire, and they're gonna be probably one point five or higher. Edit's a little negative, but with, as you all know, probably, I hope you know, that Toyota's going to grant us three million dollars. And that will go towards the TMMI battery plant, this station. And that will take that edit out as negative, because we're using that one line. Show how much we spent already for that project, which is supposed to be two hundred some thousand dollars. That will come back into edit first, and then the rest of it will be course of the rent. That's how I always look at it, I always see where we're gonna start. Our year, end our year, and that all has to be cleaned up before we can basically even start. And then if, the other page I gave you was taking all the two hundreds down for police and fire out of the safety tax, which saves us, or doesn't save us, but takes four hundred thirty one thousand dollars out of the overall budget. That still leaves us a negative of one hundred fifty thousand dollars.
And then as far as all the employees with what we were picking at, or raise, we have a total number on what that would run.
Well, if you don't give many raises, and you go back to twenty twenty five, um, salaries plus what they're budgeted twenty twenty six, and the two hundreds below, you can cut your budget a half million dollars. Once you cut your salaries back, then you're cutting, you're perfect, you're cutting everything. That's two line, I mean, basically, that's police, fire. You know, and, and Clint didn't budget any raise easily, he never puts a raise in his budget. Clint's budgets, two hundred thousand dollars less than his last, because he stores men. He's gonna want it back, because then this year, he's gonna buy all that salt, so it's gonna be additional appropriations that they'll be here for him. I mean, I think you can get it close to twenty, for twenty twenty six, but then twenty twenty seven's gonna be as bad in twenty twenty eight. Because you will be out of lit tax, I mean, we're using, we're wanting to use four hundred thirty one thousand dollars in lit tax. And that's just the two hundred in the fire, police, that's what you can use. Does that make sense? Paige was on the road today, she's gonna look at it again in the morning, but she, she looks at all my sheets, and she said, well, that's basically what I'm telling you to. And I knew it would be bad when we disband the fire, or take a hit tax wise. Now they're, we had another policeman quit today, so now they're, they call theirself down two, and I don't know where we get a number of how many we have to have. And then the fire are getting ready to take open applications, build their pool.
Already have.
I know they're getting, I mean, it's out there now, but I, unfortunately, I don't know, that's your call, I would probably, like I said in my email, probably.
I think that we need to put on some kind of hiring freeze for full-time people until we see how this plays out.
In all departments?
Yeah, yeah, that's what, that's what I think we should do, until we see where we're at. Because otherwise, you're gonna turn around and you're gonna be laying people off, like you said last meeting.
That's it.
And I don't want to see anybody.
Well, when you're, yeah, when you're looking at two point four or five in our general, and police is taking two point three of it, it doesn't, you know, that's your, we have got the personal, and that's just the way we built it, we've got, the city's got the personal services up there so high, that it's hard to fund it, with this tax situation. And we, you won't know that, you don't know that, you won't know what's next year, you won't know what's twenty twenty, you won't know. But you gotta, I think we're gonna have to dig our heels in and put a voice, something. So we, we gotta handle them. Does that make more sense?
So you said we had a policeman quit in the last little bit?
Um, can't say name out loud, but yeah, he went to a different department, as of Friday, eight hours notice on the left.
And is fire at their?
Everybody probably knows, but I just.
Is fire at their eight people staff, and then Mike?
Nine.
Nine.
Are we at nine total, plus Mike?
Yeah.
Ten.
Ten.
Ten with Mike, nine, nine.
You say they're trying to hire somebody else?
Well, they're thinking that some people are gonna retire, and.
Oh.
And when that happens, he wants to have a pool of people, so that he doesn't have to just start. But, I mean, hang on.
So if we have a hiring freeze, then when somebody retires, they don't replace them?
Correct. And they may drop like flies if, if we don't get, you know.
Aren't you saying that if we give zero raise, we'll save half a million dollars?
That's the difference between what we've budgeted at a dollar. Going back to what we budgeted in twenty five, that's the only way I can look at. Go back to where you were, because if you don't get a raise, then your personal lines are all gonna be the same.
The only one that would be different.
Same appropriation.
Fire would be different, because I.
Well, because you got, you're putting that other guy in.
Yeah, did, did we, is that included in his budget?
Yes, sir.
I think he said it.
But was the dollar raise included?
Yes. And, and he moved that one guy from lit into his budget. But I mean, they're already negative in overtime, they're gonna be negative in FLSA overtime, probably be negative in salary. Yeah, the only thing that won't be negative is probably, well, perf probably be negative too, he may be negative in all of his one hundred. Maybe not health and, health and life, I don't know what. Other than that, which, we can move that around to make him not negative, but. He's, you know, he's fifty eight percent is Medicare, which is not that, only that's fourteen thousand, but the rest of them are gonna go next. We still got four more months. And of course, I'm looking at August as number.
So if we go, so we go with the numbers like you gave us, if, if, so is this putting fire in the general in?
No.
That's just, that's just using lit tax for their, their money, keeping them where they're at.
One point four is his budget, you're talking about this sheet now?
Yeah.
Yeah, one point four four zero is his budget.
Okay.
And if you take a hundred fifty four thousand in lit.
So we're, we're at one forty, I mean, so.
So out, out of everybody's budget, we're still, not counting MVH, not counting water sewer, just your general plus your fire. Still a hundred and forty thousand dollars in there.
And if we take away, if we don't give a raise, and we take that out of their, out of their salaries, and just keep them where they're at. I mean, police was eighty, is what I figured the difference, eighty, something like that. But that, this isn't perf and all that, this is just.
Yeah, eighty thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the fire though, the fire's seventy seven, but does that include? Because if I look at fire, my question, I guess my question is, is fires. So, six fifty five is what they're asking this year's, and five seventy eight for last year, but that six fifty five includes that, including the, the ninth firefighter, or the?
That ninth firefighter's out.
Right, but he's going into.
He's going into.
So, well, they're asking six fifty five, does that include that, him in that salary then, that, that would be included in that salary? His salary?
I didn't figure it that way. But just his twenty twenty five budget was one point two, and he's asked one point four.
So if we add up that, those amounts, let's just say that the fire, or the police is eighty, one fifty eight. And I'll leave, leave the, or the police, leave the fire out of it for now, so, but all the other funds. Ninety four thousand, nine hundred twenty dollars. We don't give the, that's not including perf or anything like that, so we're getting closer to the one forty at that point.
You're gonna be real, you're gonna be over it, because you're perf and everything's fluctuate too. I mean, I roughly figured five hundred fifty three thousand dollars, all the, all the one hundred, and every, and everybody's.
Okay.
Police, mayor, clerk, park, park. That's just roughly, taking twenty twenty five salary with twenty twenty six, two hundreds and below. But then some of that won't, it's coming out of lit.
Yeah, so, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, if we take, if we do, like we talked about, and using lit for the two hundreds down, and, so we're gonna be short one forty at that point.
Yes, sir.
And then if we don't add, if we just take their sal, their, their budgets back to where, back to two thousand twenty five salaries, that's another ninety four thousand, so we're looking at.
And you're just talking police and fire, everybody.
I'm talking to everybody, the, the mayor, city clerk, uh, and parks, that's everybody from what I could see, so, at that point, we're at.
Fifty thousand?
Yeah, we're roughly. Roughly, yeah. Minus signs to. Yeah, roughly forty something thousand.
How much was your ninety what?
Ninety four, just say ninety four thousand.
Nine saves forty, ninety one. So you're a hundred thousand dollars, too. But you're gonna be real close, because you don't have to pay the perf.
Yeah, and the perf's not including that, so, I mean, I know that's not, that's, like I said before, it's not that, I mean.
Even if you, even if you just, just roughing. If you go fifty cent raise, you're still gonna come out probably okay. But you're using all your lit.
Yeah. Minus the twenty percent. That we, that we're keeping out.
Yeah, but you're not using all your lit tax, you're using all the fire and the police available lit tax for those two hundred.
What you say, we could give them fifty cent raise, and be okay?
I think you'd probably just, you'd still say, you'd probably still be a little bit ahead. But the problem of it is, again, you're, you're still, you're gonna end the, end of the year, six hundred thousand dollars in the hole. It has to come out in general, because those accounts cannot be negative at the beginning, at the end of. Just adds to the. Bad news. But it's the way it was, I mean, that's the way we budgeted, we budgeted, they got one million, and we budgeted one point two, and they're gonna spend one point five. But general's gonna be in the hole too. Well, yeah, just, and that's estimated disbursements for the last, you know, for the next. That's where we were at. But that, you know, you get through twenty twenty six, then you gotta deal with twenty twenty, well, like I said, it's just a never. You know, we thought we had it perfect, because we got a million dollars in safety tax, and then they took it, as fast as they give it, they took it back. And again, you got a few more sessions between now and twenty twenty eight. And you are keeping your twenty percent, and that's counting three hundred and some thousand dollars for park. There is more lit money out there to spend, but you don't wanna put it, you wanna spend personal services.
No, 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 no.
That's it, because you're already in, you're already upside down in personal service, and, and, yeah.
Well, and we don't know we're gonna be in two years, I mean.
I mean, and all, and all right, the only thing we can do, I mean, today is budget for two thousand twenty six, and, and, I mean, plan for two thousand twenty seven, twenty eight, but that's all we can do today, because.
Twenty twenty six, the best you can.
We don't really know, we don't know what numbers we're gonna have, for sure.
You gotta remember in your, if you look, I don't know if you've had a fun report lately, but there's like, five seven, seven point seven million in there, but we do have two million.
We, we do want to forget it.
Well, I want you to, I want you to forget it, but I, when you look at the fund report, I don't want you to think, okay, we, we had nine million here, and now we only got seven. It's there, it's just.
It's, I mean, just basically comes down to, we're gonna have to make the decision on what, what we want, how we want to seed and go.
Gotta do it pretty fast, because we're gonna have, I mean, we only got it out.
Tomorrow.
I mean, you got tomorrow, but then you're gonna have to, you got, it has to all be adopted in public hearing and everything pretty fast. We already moved our public hearing, because we can't, we can't have, we won't have it in gateway fast.
Yeah.
Because I would, tonight would have, or next meeting would have been our public hearing. For our budget.
Has to be done within days.
Well, they have, we have to have time to get in gateway, now we're doing all this lit, make gateway harder.
Well, I mean, I, I, I mean, I don't see any other way around it, I know, like, like. As much as I'd like to use the lit for other things that, that we probably need to spend it for at this point right now, in order for us to get where we need to be at, we're gonna have to do that.
I mean, that's, that's kinda where Baker Trilly was when we got it, he really wanted us to do that. To help the general fund out, far fund out. I think we're just.
Yeah, I, I agree.
And again, you don't know what your tax draw's gonna be next. Some save, some kind of, money leaves on us.
So when, when you say shore up the end of this year with the shortfall that we're gonna have, by the end of the year, I mean, we're just gonna have to do additional appropriations for those amounts, to get them where we need to be at.
They have to be at least zero.
Zero, yeah.
The ending cash balance has to be zero or more. I know that's a variable account.
That happens often.
No.
No?
But it did, I forgot, I have a cool state, I forgot about the fire. That was the only one. Because they didn't have anybody to begin with.
Hey, you started zero?
Started zero.
Just didn't get enough to cover the.
Didn't get enough to cover the.
Cover the.
Not bad. Yeah, I just have to just appropriate. Get as close as you can, and hope it doesn't go.
Well, I mean, I, me, me personally, I don't know, I mean, everybody else can give it, I feel like that's what we have to do. And, and I, I think if we can look at giving a fifty cent raise, and still coming out fairly close, I think, then that, that, as much as I would love to be able to give it more, I feel like the employees deserve it, I mean, they work hard. I, I don't wanna come, I don't wanna come halfway through the year next year, and we have to lay somebody off, because money's not there either.
And in years past, several years ago, when there was no raise given, employee morale and productivity went down.
Oh, it will, yeah, and you will, and they all say it won't, but it will, and you'll have, everybody be saying. They still gotta remember how much the benefits are worth. You don't, I mean, I know they work for a pay, I know you do, you do, that's what pays your bills at home, but you're getting a lot of benefits for paying all the per, I mean, you could give them a dollar raise, but then ask them to pay five percent of their perf. Or pay, you know.
Yeah.
That's not right either.
No, in, in an all righty, you're just.
Robin Peter.
Yeah, yeah.
I just seen.
Kinda like the.
Fifty cent raise, and use the lit tax, see where we land.
Kinda like cutting property taxes, but having to institute a, a lit tax to cover the difference, I mean, that's just.
It's gonna be better for us.
Yeah.
I don't think we'll see, I don't think we'll see Daryl Schmidt back.
Give him kudos, he showed up, at least, and took the fire, but.
I agree, that's what we ought to do. Um, I go for the fifty cent raise, and I go for pulling everything back this year that we can.
I think we're pretty well on agreement on, on that, I think everyone's in agreement on that, we don't really have a choice.
I don't even know if we have the choice with fifty cents.
You mean, we should, or we shouldn't?
You know, we're already down, you said, was it five, six hundred now?
Five.
That's from last year. Okay, and then, we're looking here at next year.
With, with a dollar raise, you're set at one point, you, you take back fifty, probably fifty.
Starting off.
Well, that's where you always start, everybody starts, everybody thinks we got a balanced budget, we didn't have balanced budget last year, because we were two minute, two hundred thousand dollars over budget, and we start. At the end of the year, it's never, definitely it's not gonna be this. Appropriations are just figures, can't live within them, then.
Which we knew, we knew going into it because of the fire, that we were gonna be short throughout the year, that we were.
We talked about that, because you couldn't, you couldn't even pay as, you couldn't even pay as you killed.
No.
No, we couldn't pay for his salary.
Yeah, we couldn't, yeah, we couldn't even pay his salaries, even at the lesser amount of people.
So is there any money in lit that, from this year, that we could still appropriate to, to use towards any of the fire?
Not if you're getting the three hundred thirty thousand, and the, and part, and saving the twenty percent.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, I didn't even bring that in.
We're still gonna be, either it was, it's the same, same scenario, you're Robin Peter, pay Paul, at that point.
Yeah, you're gonna take it, yeah.
Because it's, it's coming, the fire truck's coming at some point, if, if, if we continue. And if, and if we don't have it sitting there.
I mean, it gets, point, push come shove, and that the twenty twenty eight, and of course, is now, you just. Got to have, for twenty twenty six.
Yeah.
Because if you don't have the funds, you're either gonna have to cut back, or not pay money for a fire truck, and. You gotta pay your bills. The only place really to cut them is in your personal, personal, you know, because, I mean, the street lights are street lights, you gotta pay for them, utilities.
Yeah.
Every other department running, I mean, I don't even know if we got twenty union employees, maybe not. MVH yourself, it's, it's there, he never, he doesn't have one person.
So do we just need to crunch the numbers in, and get, and just put the numbers in as far as, well, if we agree to that, I mean?
Everybody do that, can't do it right now.
Yeah.
Probably can do it. I can do everybody else's. I can do the car.
We need to make a decision tomorrow, I'd like to see those numbers, to see where we're at, to see where we have to go, if, if, you know, I know, I feel like, people are in agreement, that we, we need to give something for, for a, for a raise. Trying to, I mean, I don't know how we can, unless we cut other things. And I have a feeling, that's what we're gonna have to decide, is if we, if we decide that we wanna give the employees a raise, fifty cents, that we're gonna have to cut other areas.
But there is no other area to cut.
Unless you tell. I mean, there, there's, there's some areas that we're gonna have to cut.
I, I think if we crunch the numbers at fifty cents, and you put in, in your perf, what we're gonna be saving in perf, and, and I think we're gonna get closer to what you think, even at fifty, like you said, at fifty cents. At a dollar, we're, I mean, at zero, we're definitely gonna make it, but if there's wiggle room between zero and fifty cents, and we can do that, then I think that's what we need to do. Does that make sense? Because we're just putting in salaries here, but that doesn't include what you're gonna be saving in, in perf, and, and the other areas that.
I'm just saying, what I just said, if I'm going from twenty twenty five budget, is personal services, everybody's hundreds, to taking all them, like, going back twenty five, adding them to everybody, you're saving like five hundred thousand dollars. That's your perf, your benefits, everything. We pay all their perf, we pay all everything, pay all their health insurance. Change, but perfect change, those curies change, you know, it all changed. And Paige was on the road, she's gonna look at it like tonight, she may have, her suggestions are all just like mine. I'm just no guy trying to make sense of time.
Pretty good at that?
I mean, she, everything, unfortunately, everything she said came true. And they've been doing.
Let's look at fifty, fifty cent, and, uh, go from there, I mean.
I mean, I'm pretty sure that the rest of.
We, we gotta plug something in to see where we're going, I mean, we're saying fifty cents, or, uh, or nothing isn't gonna stop, we gotta know what exactly we're looking at.
I think your two hundred numbers and down are pretty well, they're, they're, I'd say they'll be okay. It's all your one hundred. We're just gonna, we're just gonna have to take, bite the bullet, and we're gonna have to make the balance at the end of the year, six hundred, we're just gonna have to make that corporation, how the general.
Which we already knew.
That's where it always comes from anyway.
Yeah.
Because we, we knew, we knew with the fire, I mean, at one, last year, and, and the budget at one point four, we were automatically four hundred thousand.
But we budgeted one point two.
One, yeah, we budgeted, but we only, we're gonna, we're only gonna draw one.
Yeah, so that's two, but we're already two hundred thousand dollars more than what we started.
So we're four, we were, yeah, so we knew we were four hundred, pretty close to four hundred probably by the, just from fire.
And I, there is no answer to it, because that's just the way that's always, you budget a million, that's ten. Because you have, you have to sit on people pretty.
What needs to happen, huh?
Huh?
That's what needs to happen.
Well, yeah.
Well, with the fire though, I mean, we were going into a, a brand new year without knowing, I mean, really, we, we had no guide, guide as far as.
Alls we got is what they had, what they gave us, and they had no idea either, you know, because they were just, took a portion of the general, stuck it over, because they had no idea what we'd get. And the only reason they got what they got is because they knew they were gonna need one point four, that's why they moved it. So if, even if you move it back to general, put it on general, you're still in the same.
Not, not knowing what next year's draw is.
Not, not knowing what next year's draw is gonna be, we kinda don't, right?
You never will know, that's the bad part. I mean, even, you can fix, try to fix twenty twenty six, but you may be right back next year in the same situation.
Might be a different, it might not be in the same, would, would still be in general, or would it be?
It's not general now, it's separate, but I'm just saying, if you take all your revenue and put it all together, like, everybody was in general, you're still gonna be in, or just put police and fire, and the rest of us are in general, in general, we're still not. I mean, we were spending more than what our revenue is, whether it's in general or fire.
They're making a difference.
All together, where, where's that, here?
I mean, my slip.
Yeah, your in line is.
Yeah, just slip.
Yeah, that's because, when you look at their cash, how they do it, is if you look at your ending cash balance, Baker Tilly, or me too, are saying, okay, we're gonna be four hundred thousand dollars ho, so let's go ahead and put that four hundred thousand dollars in their draw this year, take it out general, because generals got the money. That's why they do it, whether it's right or wrong, but, but, but the general and the fire together all one, you're still four hundred thousand dollars ho, but you're gonna be six hundred thousand.
With big, big.
Yeah.
Like, look to see where you're the, where you don't have the most.
That's how they, because they know, that's what they're telling you, you need to have that money in that fund at the end of the year.
Yeah.
So, they're trying to fix next year with putting money in.
Mm-hmm.
Again, I just look at it all.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, if there's money left at twenty twenty five, and there's negatives, we can move it around and make twenty twenty five okay, or better, but you can't fix twenty, you can't fix six hundred thousand dollars, ain't that. Or make all of your, your general things come out that one. What are we thinking, we just dial it all back to fifty cent?
Hey, that's what I, I suggest.
Plug it in.
Yep.
As soon as I get it to the end of morning, see, and I'll, I'll email Paige, see if she's got some. Wizardry while she was driving home from South Bend. Yeah, some epiphany.
At least it's a long drive for her, yeah, a lot of time to think about it.
I think she doesn't talk about us too much, and I think she might pick us off on Angie now, but Angie's good. Paige may be moving up.
You wanna talk to?
I can tell, I call Bobby tonight, Mike tonight, and tell him to dial it back. That way they'll have theirs done, I just have to plug it in, and then I just have to do our, our little one. I mean, I, we cut enough out of ours, even with a dollar raise, mayors and mine, we were, we were less than last year.
Well, like I said, we can't do much with yours or theirs, I mean, the only two places that we can make any type of cut realistically, fire and police.
And then a two hundred is the only place you can do it is, is City Hall, but you can't, I mean, that's where all the streetlights and the. And we don't get our water.
Do we wanna tell Bobby there's, that there is a hiring freeze coming, so.
Guys, you need to, I.
Even though.
I don't know, that's, make a motion.
I don't think we, I don't know if we can do that in a, in a budget hearing, I don't think so.
Yeah, but.
I don't think I'd, I'd really wanna call it a hiring freeze, I'd wanna say with, before any full-time people are added anywhere, they have to come and get council approval.
That'd be a food for thought for your next council. That makes sense, because.
Yeah.
Can't vote or anything.
He oughta know, but he's not supposed to replace the guy who just quit.
Right.
But he knows.
He does.
He said, what would you do, and I said, I just sit on it for a minute.
That's what I was trying to, I'd have him.
And Mike's not really hiring anybody, he's just getting his pool.
He's just getting his pool together.
But this is, I mean, it's not just this numbers, it's everybody, we gotta buckle everything. I agree with the mayor, we gotta, our utilities need replaced, we gotta do it, it's ugly to put it in the ground, see it, but, gotta do it. Watch all of it, even though sewer and water's not appropriated.
Especially with this big end dot project, we wouldn't take advantage of that.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
There's a lot more bang for our buck if we participate with that, much possibly, all the way, all utility. Especially with.
Oh, I think, I, I, it still blows my mind. I think it's great.
Say it, leave it at that.
Yeah, we, yeah, we'll just stop there, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you this time, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'll call Bobby as soon as we get out, uh, Mike as soon as we get out. See where we're at. To be in the, just like this.
Yeah.
Plug the numbers right back into their two hundred. Probably just leave them in the two hundreds, see what we're at with that, and then, just giggle.
And they.
We're gonna have.
They just need also, no.
We can't come up with.
All their, like, the things that they asked for in lit, that, that's just not gonna be possible, it's your minus the, us, we're having to, pay the, the, the car lease that we've already.
I think you pretty well already next one, but I told Bobby today, I think, that's why. Because this is an unknown. We have to fulfill that lease, that's in the money, that's in the.
Yeah.
That portion. He did get his. He did get his money from Springs Valley.
Seen a, uh, thing from Abe today that talked about suggestions from them would be to take that lit. Yeah.
Who suggested that?
Abe. They're gonna replace, instead of just deleting, replace, delete the property tax, they weigh his figures, but now add a lit from the state level. That could be a flat across the board.
I don't, I, I seriously don't think they'll leave it the way it is.
They'll have to.
I don't even think.
The same, uh, the same message came through, and it said, uh, kind of Beach Grove looks to be extinct, whatever that.
I mean, it's everywhere.
That's a big, that's a big play, right?
Yeah, yeah, well, I was just at, at Greenwood this last weekend, we spent the weekend up there before we went to the Colts game, and, I mean, they're, they're, they're seeing growth, I mean, they're seeing, they're seeing a lot of sub divisions and a lot of things coming, that, you know, that might help them out, and things like that, but i- if you're not seeing that, you're, I mean. Even with the lit, I don't know how a lot of these.
Yeah, and another thing, you know, I keep telling this out there, we're gonna, we won't have that in twenty eight, just took five hundred forty thousand dollars of that. There did, I don't think they even know what they, I don't think they've figured it all out.
There's just too many un, unknowns, I mean, at this point.
I mean, there's always unknown, but this is really.
Sounds like that, sounds like that is growing, and then they start giving these tax, I think, uh, property tax breaks. I mean, they get, probably gonna have enough services to even keep track if there is a population boom or whatever.
Because you did that with intentions of you growing and keep, and that, don't need that money, but now you're gonna need that. Already committed. We're not in that. I think what we're trying to do will be close. By the time you take it all off the curve and everything, not just your salary, take it all the way, social security, everything down, I think.
Like I said, I mean, we're taking away a lot of things that we'd like to see happen and, and get done, I mean, we, we, we like to see cars, and we, I mean, new cars, and those things that they've asked for in lit, but I mean, I just don't, at, at this point, we don't have another option at this point, because.
Well, if you didn't have lit, you wouldn't be done.
Yeah, we, yeah, yeah.
I mean, if you didn't have lit, you wouldn't have bought the car, I mean, on, you wouldn't have had it.
Nope.
Well, you'd had to just take it straight out of your, you know, check.
Yeah.
Never would have, they, it would.
On the fire side, hopefully the county, or however that works out, we, we get enough to take on that, to start looking at trucks, right?
I, you are a very wishful thing.
I know, I'm trying to be optimistic, but I mean.
You're optimistic, but knowing their ambulance service and how. They need to buy as much. I don't know if I was, she wasn't on the other foot, I'd be very. Hopefully. That's the purpose of doing.
That's the purpose of. If we look at our call volumes and our service area. You, you have bar picks.
Equipment's big, I mean, their salaries and everything, you. Trying to buy them.
Yeah.
Perfect. So, is that where we're at?
Think so, and if you can just get all that plugged in there, I'm almost.
Well, wait till you see it.
Yeah.
Let's, let's get it back.
I just feel bad, and, you know, you, now I have to go back, there you go, want a little bit of that. Because we know what it's gonna be at zero.
It's better, it's better than zero.
If this was your checkbook at home, what would you be doing? I'll buy, because if you don't have it. Problem of it is, once you get your personal effect, your personal benefits or personal service stuff, it's hard to cut them back, and then, fortunately, the only way to cut them back is to cut.
Yeah, that's, that's like.
Get them to understand that that's not done on purpose, and I know they're set on so many numbers, we got this many positions.
Then I'm just, if you go to a quarter, and maybe be good and go back up, I hate to sit there and have a plug in fifty, and we have to cut again.
I'd say put it, put it at fifty, we're not locked into this anyway, you know, they're, if we have to cut more, they're gonna tell us to.
Uh, if you get within fifty thousand dollars, they're not gonna tell you to cut nothing, they didn't tell you to cut during thousand dollars last year.
No.
They let that fly, as long as you got it in your general fund, the LGS. Because this, I've always said, this is just, this is just like a budget, you can put all the numbers in over here, but it's just end result.
Our goal, we're not, we're trying to keep from laying people off, which is a good thing for workers, the raise is important, but it, I think they would rather have a job. And that's what our job is, to stay within, stay within flow of that happening, and paying our, and being able to pay our bills.
And just, again, you all know that, because, you know, when you take four hundred thirty thousand dollars out of your budget and out lit, you wouldn't be given nothing.
Yeah.
Be able to give nothing.
Yeah.
You'd probably then be back.
And once, if, I mean, if, once it's in there, you said, you can't really, can't get it back, so next year, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna budget that fifty cents for next year again, and, I mean, so, it's there.
I think this is almost an attention getter, not, this is no, by no means a good thing, but it's getting us prepared, you know what I mean, I mean, this is telling you, it's not gonna get easy.
Definitely.
With what's happening, it's gonna happen with the, uh, new Senate bill.
Yeah.
Need assessments to go up, I mean, there's a lot of moving targets here, and go down again, sorry, didn't wanna say that way. Yeah.
It's better for us to be proactive than reactive, too.
And unfortunately, this is all you can do.
Yeah.
You didn't know it, now, there's no way you're gonna know it till your budget.
Right.
I mean, that can throw a figure at you, but there's just figures thrown in. Take January's figures times twelve, and so would I.
Okay, I'm good with fifty cents, plug it in, and let's see where we're at.
I can do, I can do everybody's, but I'll have police and fire do their. I wouldn't worry about, thank, he's way under budget. He didn't have salary raise in. He said if you give us a dollar, it'd just be fifty thousand. He ain't got much talent.
Let's do that. Yep.
Reconvene until tomorrow at three thirty?
Yeah. Okay. Get on the text.
Come on, I'm going, I'm going.